So is the technology guest John Motta here?
Sure.
Just in case it's not. Fabulous. All right, so what we're gonna do, I'm gonna, we have about an hour. About an hour. I'm going to just open with a couple of very brief remarks. Walk us through the FY24 budget proposal. Turn it over to Alix, who's gonna walk us through an update of all that's happening with our facilities. She can phone a friend. We've got Dave Snow at the end of that table if you have more details. Once Alix has walked through it, then we'll open it up for questions on both. I want to make sure we get through both presentations. So with that, I'm just gonna jump in. I wrote just some opening remarks over the last couple of days and I'm gonna keep my glasses on for that. So it's really just my reflection as we head into really the end of this fall semester and where I see our college. And so we're all start. Hi friends, are you good back here? Well, I feel badly having my back to you. I think we should have you over there quickly. You don't wanna be, you don't wanna, right? I mean, the math chair in the math department, they can, I can see them out of the corner of my eye, but you know. No, I do, I want you to do whatever you want with these guys. Truly my back.
Raise your hand if there's an open seat next to you.
This one apparently.
Was it for judges?
Okay. So with that, what do I see? I see that this college is building upon its commitment mission. And I see that the building blocks that so many in this room first lay down are holding fast. And this is an incredibly partial list, but this is truly what flew off my pen. So the strategic plan composed of clear tactics to help us continue evolving is what I believe is generally a world-class college. Master schedule, general education reform, developmental education reform, K-12 partnerships, promise, caseload advising, guided pathways, outstanding enrollment and financial aid work, student-focused technology and access to technology, a continued investment in student life and the student experience, more money raised for students than ever before, the most dynamic and diverse foundation and alumni presence ever. So that's what I see right now. For all of us as members of the college community, I see an energized office of organizational development and diversity, equity, and inclusion, opportunities for us all to grow and develop as individuals and as team members, a master facilities planning and launch that will dramatically improve the spaces in which we work. I see it as an incredibly exciting and rewarding time. What else do I see? I see that we are in the midst of a profound transition. We've returned to campus, many of us, in this way as a collective body for the first fall in really three years. I think we're still finding our feet as a college body. Much greater remote presence, both for students and employees. I see the impact of a continued failed K-12 educational system in the state and I see a rapidly shifting demography in Rhode Island, including much more significant presence of multilingual learners and speakers. I see profound workplace and workforce shifts and a continued challenge to hiring and to retention, especially in high-demand spaces like IT. Outside of CCRI, I hear that challenge phased across all employment sectors in Rhode Island in the beginning. And so finally, what do I see for us going forward? I want to first talk about our college as Rhode Island's most accessible, inclusive higher education institution in the state. We are building right now the next level of work to make CCRI an even more outstanding community college, where we are able to serve even more Rhode Islanders and provide them with inspiring education and training that enables them to achieve their personal and professional goals for themselves and their families. And the examples of the work that so many of you in this room are undertaking. Orientation, student life, guided pathways maturation, cohort advising progress, curricular reform, and faculty and staff professional development, transfer work, connecting students to experiential learning, internships, and good jobs, and our work beyond our classroom walls with CCRI Community First and our Benefits Hub. And so now I want to talk about us, the people that come here every morning, all of us, to teach and to work. We are in a new moment, one that has many of us working in a hybrid fashion. Many of us are still getting used to coming back to campus. We are beginning to resume some of the ways we used to be together. Having in-person gatherings like this one, opening day, morning coffees across our campuses, sports, and theater events like Ted Clement's play that opens today at 3:00. I think we are still figuring out the many details of how to work in an environment like ours after all the changes the pandemic brought. Many more of our sections are delivered online and we are working as quickly as possible to make sure our students have what they need to learn in this fashion and our professors have what they need to teach in this new kind of classroom. I'm thrilled that our Faculty Senate and our College Assembly are active. The college will be a better, stronger, more participatory college with these two new key groups holding our and helping our governance be inclusive, dynamic, and collaborative. I get to meet every month with both bodies and I am inspired and encouraged by the work both are undertaking. I've been able to meet with union leadership consistently and I've been so happy to be able to take these meetings in person. I value that human interaction. So where do we go from here and what am I asking of each of you? First, I hope that you feel my respect, my gratitude, and my appreciation for every single one of you. I see how committed you are to this college, to our students, and to your teammates. Second, I ask that you participate in continuing to build a college that is a welcoming and rewarding place to work. A strong, positive culture is a big part of making that true. Culture doesn't sit with one group or another, doesn't belong exclusively to faculty, doesn't belong exclusively to administration or to staff. It's all of ours that we build together. I'm fully committed to that work and I'm asking that you all play a role in building this culture. So as we round out this fall and head into Thanksgiving, I want to tell you how thankful I am to every single one of you for all the gifts you bring to this college. I wish you all a very, very happy Thanksgiving with many of the delicious meals we just shared and look forward to seeing when we come back. And so with that, I'm gonna move us into FY24 budget presentation. We have some slides that I think will help guide the conversation. I think it'll take me probably 15 to 20 minutes to walk us through that, probably more like 20. I'll move it over to Alix to talk to us about what's going on on our campuses and then we'll move to questions. Okay, so here's where we are with the FY24 budget request and how it moves through the process each and every year. We built the budget. I wish Ann Marie McMahon were here in person so we could all give her a gigantic round of applause when we see her please do. We start building that budget in late spring, early summer. So that is the work we did over the summer. It went through the Finance and Facilities Committee at the Post-Secondary Council over the summer, was passed without changes. It then moved to the full council and was approved in full and it was then approved at the Board of Education, the full board, about 10 days ago. I think this is my eighth budget. It's the first time it's made it through all those phases without being reduced. So I think we can feel cautiously optimistic. And on Monday afternoon, I will head over to the Office of the Budget, the State Office, and present largely what I'm presenting here to that office in order to lay out what our priorities are. So what happens now? It sits in that office. They then are working through every single state agency budget and will then review it with the governor. And as you all know, the governor then builds, in this case, his budget and will release it with all of us in his state of the state that happens at the end of January, the week of January. From that moment, it then moves over into the legislature and the legislature has it as they have it. We've seen it go into July some years and we've seen it end, you know, in June. So we will continue to come back to this college as we're getting feedback and insight for how the budget is moving forward. You know, again, what I would offer is I don't think any of us is a fortune teller. I do think it's an encouraging sign that we've made it this far through with the full support and having a Board of Education unanimously in support of budget request, I think is a good sign and a positive sign. So with that, let's, we're gonna start with just a high-level summary, what you can see. Now, let's see. I'm hopeful most eyes are good enough to be able to take a look at that. As you can see, the unrestricted operating budget request is just under $127 million, 126.8, and that reflects a net increase of $7.1 million, which is 5.9% over our FY23, so last year's operating budget. If you look at, we're gonna start, we're gonna look at all the component parts. We're gonna start with tuition and fees. We spent a lot of time researching what we were going to request and we have been approved for a modest 4.6% increase in tuition and fees. So before Amy moves, if you take a look at that, what you will see is it's a 4.6% increase from last year. That will, based on our enrollment projections, bring in an additional $2.4 million into the college. We made that decision based on the following. We do not believe that the state funding is sufficiently robust to make possible the work that needs to get done at this college. We also believe that the collective positive impact of a $2.4 million investment is going to benefit our students in such a way that, as we move to the next slide, a $235 increase for a full-time student over last year, it's worth making that ask of our students. So move to the next slide. Great. So let's pause here for a minute. No, yeah, perfect. So the Biden administration has let us know that the Pell Grant funding for this year we're here to discuss is $7,300. So for a full-time community, CCRI student, what you can see is, go down to the third, you know, vertical column, 5325. Rough math, Sudabe, about $2,000. So for a full, if you are a fully enrolled student and you are receiving full Pell funding, you will still have $2,000 to provide for the needs you have that are beyond your tuition needs. So your transportation, your books, that everyone in this room understands the cost of being a college student. What else did we look at? So in order to make this decision, we looked at, were we still gonna be significantly below the Pell threshold? And the question, the answer is yes, we are. We also looked at, well, where do we sit with our regional peers from Maine through Connecticut? We never want to be an outlier, certainly in terms of the most expensive, and we have costs to run this college and we need to continue to invest. And so what you will see here is we are right in the middle of the pack and assuming that neither Connecticut nor Maine raises their tuition above what we're seeing here, we'll stay right there. So the only thing that could happen is that we would become sort of, on a relative basis, even more affordable relative to our peers. Those were the sort of benchmarks that we used in order to help us arrive at this decision. Let's now move, so that's sort of three basic revenue streams, right? We just talked about tuition and fees, absolutely essential. We have, I saw her, Amy Kasterek, right here. No better leader of enrollment management in New England as far as I'm concerned and the proof is in how she and that team, our team, are outperforming our peers. So we all have Amy and her team to thank for really positioning this college to be in a very strong financial position. So thank you, Amy. So the next revenue stream is our Division of Workforce Partnerships. I think it took me four years to memorize this line because this is Rhode Island budget talk. So Cody, this is what you get after every day. It's what falls under the line of sales and service. We made a decision to hold that number steady for FY24. That number of 6.4 is a steady state from FY23. And all of you who work with budgets understand, you hope for the best, you plan for the best, and you absolutely, when it comes time to putting a number on a piece of paper, you build in a very conservative fashion, right Sean? Yes. So here's what we know. We have a world-class Division of Workforce Partnerships. When 2016, we arrived at this college, that division lost money and it produced about $1 million in revenue. So even I, Sudabe, can do that math, right? We've had a six-fold increase. So going from $1 million in revenue to north of $6 million, that's a remarkable upward trajectory. I think we are strongly positioned to continue to grow that revenue and we wanted to plan conservatively because we were, we were in an election year. Who was elected governor and the way those appointments get made with labor and training does have an impact on the funding that comes our way. And so that's a conservative number. I fully expect Cody and his team to meet or exceed that and it's an increasingly important funding source for this college. Amy, let's move to the next. Okay, so the third and obviously the big number, right? The two biggest numbers are what the state gives us in state appropriation and then the revenue that comes in from tuition and fees with an increasingly helpful influx from the Division of Workforce Partnerships. So let's move now to state appropriations. We've made a request of $63.4 million of the state of Rhode Island. That's a $7.7 million increase from FY23 and that represents 13.9% more than what our FY23 revised budget was. So let's break down what the 7.7 is. 1.7 of that 7.7 is just to run the college the way we're running it today. That's how we meet our contractual obligations. That's how we pay the additional costs to turn the lights on. So 1.7 is just a steady state. We would need that in order to run the college the way we're running it now. The additional $6 million is the money that we need in order to continue to scale the work that you all had launched. And I'm gonna walk us through what that $6 million looks like so you can see what we are coming in front of the state, asking the state to get behind and to invest it. Okay. Five high-priority areas, all of which are directly tied to our strategic plan. You can see the investments right now and I'd like to start with student aid. So $2.5 million in the form of a scholarship. So of the $6 million, we're going to the state of Rhode Island and we're asking the state to invest $2.5 million in student scholarships. And I want to talk a little bit, I'll give you the, sort of the quick sort of facts and then I'll give you the case for why. The facts are right in front of you. So we have, call it a million people in Rhode Island. More than 10% of them have some college credit and no degree. So look to your left, look to your right, wherever you go, and you will see someone in that position. When I think about what this Fresh Start Scholarship is meant to do, we launched the Rhode Island Promise. It is here to stay. Governor McKee signed it into law down in the Gray Hall. That is, we now bring into our college a significant percentage of high school graduates, about 20%, every year of high school seniors come into this college thanks to the Rhode Island Promise. Everyone in this room understands that is one of the anchors of the financial stability of this institution. Let's set aside, while we all get up every morning, which is the mission. When I look at Fresh Start, Fresh Start is the balance. It is the other part of the work that we must be doing as a community college and that is serving adult Rhode Islanders. So again, we, you know, let's put both of our hats on. Let's start with the mission. If we walked around this college right now, every third student we walked into, walked into or walked to would be over the age of 25. That is what we are designed to do as an institution. It's what we've always been designed to do. And the imperative to do this right now is urgent. Increasingly, the jobs that my grandfather had, that's no longer going to cut you. Having a high school diploma is going to keep you right at the poverty level in the state of Rhode Island and most other states. In order to have a shot at the middle class, you need a college degree. We are the most affordable place to make that possible. So there's the mission part. That's why we all do this work. What is the Sean part and the sort of financially responsible, if Ann Marie were here and I see Dave Rollinson? In order to be in the black, we need to have enrolled students. The demography in the state of high school students is shrinking. That's why our 12 higher education partners across the state are worried. They're seeing that pool shrink. And now that we have this conversation, listen with different ears to what you hear our four-year colleagues across the state talk about market and really put it forward in a way that I certainly didn't hear even three years ago. Colleges are waking up and going after adult Rhode Islanders because they've gotta figure out a way to increase their enrollment pool. We have, I think we have a triple head start on every other college in Rhode Island. First, we were founded with that principle. No one in this room woke up to die yesterday. Every single person here who's a professor, Jay, how many times are you teaching students over the age of 18 or 19?
Probably 30%, 40%.
Yeah. So no one, you know, you don't have to have some kind of professional development to learn how to do that. That's been part of what you do. Same thing for everyone else in this room. That's number one. Number two, we have that brand and that market reputation already. When adult Rhode Islanders think about coming back to college, I believe they think first of CCRI. I think they see this college as welcoming, as inviting, as inclusive, and they can imagine themselves here, if they can imagine themselves in college at all. And then the third, of course, we are the most affordable college in the state of Rhode Island. So what do we know? We know that Greg Wilpoint and Amy Kasterek and Kelly Morrissey and that entire team has been hard at work really developing an adult learner enrollment strategy. And this is sort of the latest output that that team has come forward with. I believe that it is a request that will be very warmly received in the governor's office and inside the State House. So I'm extremely optimistic that this proposal will be granted. And I wanted us all to sort of have a sense of what it is and I'm gonna oversimplify. If you have a question, parking lot it, we can come back to it and if I can answer it, we've got people who can. The idea with the Fresh Start is we are focusing our efforts. We believe we can serve 1,000 Rhode Islanders, which is a good place to start, with this scholarship. And the idea is they've been a part of this community before and something happened that took them out. And so the charge of Amy and Greg and their teams is to reach out to those Rhode Islanders and say, we, we want you back. We believe you belong here. We so believe you belong here, we're gonna pay for that first semester, so come on back. And then it's gonna be that team's responsibility to figure out how we support them clearing the financial hurdles, which in many cases is satisfactory academic progress, so that once that's cleared, those who are Pell eligible can then in fact rely on our federal government in order to continue their education. So that's a sort of partial summary, but I can tell you that's the vision, that's the strategy, and I'm optimistic that we will be positively received at the State House. Okay. Priority two, collective impact work. There are gonna be two that I'm gonna bring forward. The first is what we're calling CCRI Community First. And what I want you to picture is the South Side of Providence, the West Side of Providence, a community-based organization that you can picture. Let's choose the Boys and Girls Club. I want you to picture the flagpole. I want you to picture the flag that says Boys and Girls Club and right underneath it, I want you to picture a green CCRI flag. So why is this where we need to go? The first thing I want to say, this would be a far more serious form of question, which is what do you think COVID robbed you of? I think COVID robbed us and me personally of two years of work that I thought we would be doing and instead we responded to a global pandemic. This is what we were meant to be starting in the spring of 2020. Here we are now. So the idea, and if you have taught at our Providence campus or spent time at our Providence campus, here's what you know. It's a mile walk or a half-mile walk. We should be filled to the rafters with South Side of Providence residents. Why aren't we? That's a, that's a, that's a history lesson in itself. We need to go to where our communities are. We need to build that trust. We need to meet those communities where they are. And then, as we have done that, bring them fully into our campuses and beyond. That is the vision. Here's the good news. We have at least two, and there are many more, world-class colleges that are our partners that have built this model, that are maturing this model, and that are onboard to help us as we advance this model. So I am really fired up about this work and I think sort of all of us in this room will have an opportunity to be part of it. So we are gonna ask for relatively modest financial support as we continue to advance this work. Let's take a look now at the Benefits Hub. So CCRI Benefits Hub, what's the, what's the sort of high level? What do we know? Everyone here knows that the needs of our students are not purely the needs that happen in a classroom. We all know that. What else do we know? We are a college. Everyone here is experienced in working at a college, whether you are advising students, whether you are teaching students. I don't believe that we can effectively be an outstanding community college and the other resources that our students require to be successful college students. We don't have the capacity. We don't have the expertise. We don't have the resources. We have to work with a collective impact model in order to fully serve our students. I see this as a tremendous opportunity and I'm excited about the partnerships that we're building. So who are the key partners? United Way. So the United Way is fully onboard to bring their resources into this work. The Executive Office of Health and Human Services and the Department of Health. So the idea, and again, this is summary. We will have an actual physical space with resources, both our own and ideally, as we mature it, those of our outside partners. Where if, if you're Alix, you come in, you tell your story once. You don't tell your story to 10 different people across the college. My job, if I'm listening to that story, is to ascertain what Alix needs to learn effectively in Sudabe's class. That's my job. And my job is to then connect Alix to the resources inside the college. So we've got exceptional resources. If you need an academic advisor, if you need a community advisor, if you need access to food right now on your lunch card, there's a tremendous amount that we can bring. There also are things we are not equipped to do. We don't apply, we don't supply utility assistance. We aren't fully set up to provide financial coaching. But there are state and federal agencies right here in Rhode Island, but that's what they wake up and do every day. We need to bring those resources into the college. So when I think about the partners, I think we will be building that partnership. I think critical partners again are United Way, EOHS, Department of Health, and Private Dollars. So, you know, we've made one ask and the answer was we were handed $100,000. Bobby and his team just submitted just under a million-dollar proposal to the federal government. I am optimistic that we are going to be funded as we continue to invest in this work and I think the state should help us. So I don't think the state should be the total solution. I don't think that's a realistic budget model, but I think they should help us do this work. Okay. Let's move to workforce and the budget, which is about $1.5 million to support 14 positions to continue the work that's underway. Four positions in Student Services, three of them are alive right now. So the state budget specifically said, if you invested HIRF dollars in roles that were designed to support your agency, in this case, our college, work and it's paying off, include it in your budget and tell us what you're doing. And so here are three that are in the Student Services area that we are requesting be made permanent in our budget. Permanent Coordinator for Credit for Prior Learning, a re-enrollment specialist to focus on adult learners. So we just had that conversation. And a Coordinator for our Satisfactory Academic Process Appeal work. And some of you know exactly what I'm talking about. Anyone who's interested, I can talk about it and the entire Student Services team can. That fourth position that we're requesting is gonna support expanding our Early College. So our dual enrollment work, which we know is critical. We are especially interested in expanding Accelerate, which is the work we launched in Providence and looking to move. in Providence and looking to move that beyond Providence to other cities and towns. Five new positions in workforce development. We know, you know, when I've talked about what I see happening in the state of Rhode Island in live time, adult education and ELS programming. We have to stay ahead of that in order to be ready to serve the Rhode Islanders that are looking to come into this college. Also want to build out our Career Services team so that we can scale experiential learning opportunities for students with Rhode Island-based employers. When we got the Guided Pathways Grant three years ago, that's one of the key components, right? And I'm looking, I see that. We know, you know, all of us should reflect on our own college experiences, and depending what your own story is, you either did or did not have access to experiential learning. That network that gets built, that confidence that gets built, it's as important as anything that happens in a classroom. We've got to figure out how to do more of that at scale. Two Assistant Deans in Academic Affairs. We are an outlier for sure among our peers with not having these to support strong academic programming, and I'm pleased to support it. Two positions in HR. We have a tireless HR team, so we're going to expand investing in that area to support robust recruitment and DEI initiatives. One, Project Manager, so that Dave Snow doesn't collapse as we undertake this campus-college-wide incredibly exciting capital projects that we're taking on for the next five years. Finally, Technology. Amy? Okay, I love you. There we go. Okay, $550,000 to support multiple projects. We're going to move our server infrastructure to a cloud-based system. We need software licenses to support our tremendous growth in online learning, and we need funding to support, to implement the CRM, the Client Relationship Manager. For folks, if I were to simplify, it's basically, we're the only college in Rhode Island without one, and it means, you know, when Rosemary comes in as a brand-new student, all the way through until she's an alumni that Bobby's working with, all of us in this room need a way to be able to follow and track Rosemary, and right now we don't have one. That's the simple version. Congressman Landman and the federal delegation brought us home, $1 million in earmark. We have to put up a quarter of a million dollars in order to actually implement that. So that's one of the key priorities of our CIO and that team, and I'm very excited to be moving that forward. Lastly, again, an additional request specifically from the governor's office was, you know, what did you as an agency do to respond to the crisis of last year? And we want you to continue. So we were asked, Rosemary was asked, Workforce Partnerships was asked, to dramatically increase our capacity to train Rhode Islanders in healthcare. And we moved more quickly than any other agency or organization. That's a credit to the work that Rosemary led. So what does it mean? It means that we increased, as you can see, by 25% the number of nurses we graduate every year, 67% increase in licensed practical nurses, and we more than doubled our CNAs. That's work that impacts ourselves and our families every single day in Rhode Island, and we've made a request for $550,000 in order to continue that scaled-up work. Okay, so let's go back one last time to take a look at the summary slide. Again, FY '24, just under $127 million, 126.8. Again, as a recap, that's a net increase of $7.1 million, 5.9% from last year's operating budget. So 54.9 in tuition fees, $6.4 million in workforce, 63.4 in state appropriations. I already shared kind of what happens next. It's on the governor's desk now with his team. He will come forward with his budget the third week in January, and then we will move forward as an institution to the hearings in the House Plaid Dance, usually in March, with the budget then finally being voted on and released before the end of the session on June 30th. And so I want to close just by thanking you all for making time to come in person. I love in person. To wish you all just a wonderful holiday, Thanksgiving with your families. The budget was the fun part, and now we're going to turn it over to Facilities. And after that, we'll take questions.
So I disagree. And before I launch into this, I do huge thanks to Anne Marie McMahon and to Dave Snow because we need regularly to talk about this incredible influx of capital dollars into the college, and it's really exciting because, for a couple reasons. First of all, we need the money. I mean, we have aging infrastructure that has to be addressed, and none of that is about a beautiful new great hall or working on a Providence atrium. That's about keeping the buildings running. So we need that. But what we also need is spaces for our students and places to work that feel welcoming, that really promote the kind of environment that we want to share, both as employees and as students. And finally, it's important also because it means that we're getting greater attention from decision-makers, particularly on Smith Hill, on behalf of the college, and that's really exciting. So it starts with having a plan, the Facilities Master Plan that we finished now four years ago, but that has absolutely allowed us to make a solid case for this kind of investment. And I think that acknowledgement that CCI is here, that CCI has needs, but also that CCI is really thinking about how to promote an environment for learning and working that's really positive. And so I think that what you see here are numbers, but I think that there's a lot behind it that we should really be excited about as a college. So with that, thanks, Amy. Okay, so you see here, I'm going to just bake a picture for a moment. If you look down in the lower right-hand corner, you see $260 million. That is our, that's what we're asking for. That's our ask. That's what we're submitting to the Budget Office. It has a number of different components. So of that 268 million, about 100 of it is a carryforward from past years. 165 million of it, which is that number on the far-right column right in the middle, that's coming from our request to be placed on the ballot, which is a two-year cycle. URI and Rick have taken advantage of that every two years. We hadn't since the Newport campus was built until what ended up being on the ballot in 2021. Sorry, it was delayed, so that's why I got a little confused, where we successfully were on the ballot and got $12 million, and I'll talk about that money. But we need to be doing that every two years. So we've set up the expectation. We're coming in, 2024 is the next one. So just to quickly walk through the different kinds of money that we have. As a protection is money that we get every year, you can see it's about $2.5 million. And that is, let's fix our HVAC system. Let's, you know, it's for repairs and investment that we need to do in our infrastructure. The way that we also use it, though, is we often use it for, so many of you are going to hear this term a lot, A and E, Architecture and Engineering, for projects that we're going to fund with different buckets of money. So it's the way that we get projects going, you know, in anticipation of funding. The accessibility improvements from the Governor's Commission on Disabilities, that's, it's money that we use every single year, and we're very happy for that. The Lincoln Campus Renewal, you'll see here twice the term renewal is used. That is when the college has gone to the state and kind of said, we have a series of projects in order to invest in this campus, which is a little different than a named project like the Knight Science Lab renovation. So they're all in the CIP, but they're kind of represented differently. The Phase Two Modernization, sorry, Phase One Modernization, that $52 million is money, is funds that we identified for kind of our first tier of investment that we want to make in the college. So that 52 million includes the $12 million that was on the lot. Then you'll see, and these are a little bit awkward terminology, but Phase Two through Four Modernization is basically the money we're looking ahead to, from the bond money, the bond placement on the bond that we're going to be requesting in 2024 or '26. Data cabling and infrastructure, we have a huge, huge project to really, I've seen pictures of the trays, right, Mike? That are just filled with wires, and we need to, we really need to move away from that as an institution. The Lincoln, the Knight Campus Renewal is what brought you the great hall and the ramp and a bunch of other great stuff. We have some money that's left in it that is going to be part of the investment in our renovations, Student Services. And the Science Lab renovations, walk down the hallway on the third floor, the second floor, I mean, on the third floor, and you can see what the work that's been done there. So that's kind of what, those are the buckets of money that have come from the state and the different ways we categorize them. So currently, we have two major projects. We have the Student Services redesign work, which is, which is, I'm going to talk about a little bit more in a minute. So it says that the move is 2023. It's really going to start in the middle of December. And then we have the restroom renovation. So across the college, we're investing a ton in accessibility of our restrooms, which is long overdue. They'll also be more pleasant and welcoming, but not just from an accessibility perspective, but it's really important that we get that work done. So that's a huge project. Thanks. Okay, so if you haven't been over the Field House, this is what the left side of it looks like if you're overlooking it. Basketball on one side, this is offices that are being built out. So the office space that's currently in the Field House will be used. In addition, this is where Student Services folks are going to be working. It's really quite a transformation. And you're reminded that you're in the Field House because you can see the basketball hoop. Okay, thanks, Amy. So I just kind of tried to highlight some projects that are in development, and a lot of them are things that we were working on before the pandemic that just got stalled. And so it's really exciting to think about getting going on these projects. So the Providence atrium, we have $2.3 million to really totally redo it. We have a design that we need, that we are going to be advancing and talking with the folks on that campus to kind of check in to say, this is, before the pandemic, this is what it was looking like, does this still make sense? You'll see lots of investment in our science labs. That's because, you know, they've been kind of untouched since they were originally built, depending on which campus they were in. That's going to be a little tricky from a scheduling perspective because we certainly cannot do all of our science labs across the college all at once. So more on that later, and that will affect some of the timing. In addition, we did a large, took a large look at our HVAC system, and we'll be starting, we'll be doing work on all four campuses. We're starting in Providence. But that's another $7 million investment that you're not going to be able to see, but it's really important that we do it. And as you can imagine, if you look at a building like this, our HVAC system's pretty tricky. Then in Lincoln, the Lincoln Commons, again, lots of work was done on that pre-pandemic, and we're excited to really advance that work. Science and SIM Labs, the SIM Lab has been so, you know, as Rosemary would say, it was built to the brim the day that it opened, so really excited to be expanding that. And exterior windows and painting, again, may not grab everyone, but the stuff that really needs to get done. And then, of course, our classrooms. So again, you'll see in different places investments in our classrooms that, and we will be working with the folks that are working in each of those individual campuses and with scheduling to kind of figure out how all of that goes. But you can see for a reason that Dave might need a little support doing this. Dave and Mark and Mark might need a little help. So in Warwick, I think this is exciting, redesigning, repaving the parking lot. So we're going to see how we can work to make that work better for everyone. The faculty parking lot gate is almost done, and again, we're going to be continuing work on our classrooms here. Newport is one of the campuses where started our HVAC system improvements, and Newport doesn't have a carry system like these, the carry keys, and so we're going to be installing that in Newport. So I believe that, oh, last slide? Oh, no, it's not. Okay, future bonds. So we talked about these kind of, the future ask for the bonds, 165 million. This is how we categorized that. So you'll see, when we submit the CIP, we need to kind of say, this is how we're going to spend the money. So this is what we've told the Budget Office, how we're going to use the money. Some of these are going to overlap, right? So improving energy efficiency, when we upgrade student support areas and academic areas, we're going to be doing that. So there's, it's a great, it's a very exciting investment. We tried to set aside some contingency because of what's happening with costs. I will say, one of the other, we're going to learn from the work that we're doing on Student Services in Warwick and then take that to the other campuses because that, it's certainly needed elsewhere as well. So I think that, I think that's my last slide, and so we can move to questions.
Perfect. Thank you so much, ELIX. And I, of course, was just teasing to actually find this part of work very exciting. The joke was really about budgets. Amy brought me a note. So for those that are participating virtually, you can submit a question via WebEx, and then Amy will read it out loud. I know that some of you, let me just, actually, so we have about six minutes, and I'd be happy to stay longer for anyone who's interested. Let's just open it up. Four questions on either the budget or on the capital projects, and we've got a full group of people here in the room who certainly ELIX and I can look to to help with your questions. Who's got questions? Please.
I love the Fresh Start idea. I wondered if along with that, there's going to be some scaling up of evening hours for necessary services?
So who feels, Greg?
Yeah. So I need to, that's awesome, the question. No, we actually, that's already in play now. In many cases, all right.
Come on over here.
In many cases, we are up open to seven, and we will flex as needed. I thought you were going evening classes, so for Academic Affairs in the room, we are, in order to leverage this moment, this Fresh Start, we will really need to plus up our ability to, you know, have evening classes or hybrid classes. But yeah, hopefully that helps. But yeah, that's already in, like, you have all the people that are doing the work here, the academic advisors, they're already doing that now. That's happening, so hopefully that helps.
Thank you. Anyone want to dispute the results of the Thanksgiving table, though? Or offer another?
We have a question. So somebody online has asked, what is the progress of what we saw photos of the Student Services buildup? Do you know if there are timeframes for when employees will be moving over, offices will be moving over?
Yeah, starting in mid-December. Well, some of, I mean, some of it's kind of underway. Dave, why don't you provide greater specifics?
We, if you've been out even as early as this morning, we're drywalling OES Village as we are ferrying to this.
Like the Olympics, Dave.
It is, it is. We're hoping to actually start matching occupants up to the various spaces in that location, and there is a logistics team that is part of the project that will be meeting with everybody and starting to arrange, literally right down to tagging boxes and tagging file cabinets, and a lot of that will start happening mid-December. We hope to have the village fully occupied by second week in January. There might be some movements that have to happen to get everybody satisfied, but certainly well before we have the first day of second semester classes. Then what will happen is the short-term parking lot will be permanently closed, the OES entrance will be blocked, and that will become a construction, lay-down and prep location. location. And we'll start the process of literally gutting the two floors that make up OES right
Other questions? Not over here.
How do you sign up the hotel in the village? How do you sign up the hotel in the village? I want to be the EJ.
Join us, yes. All right. Well, before we adjourn, just in terms of more gatherings like this, I can think of two. We will absolutely have some holiday gatherings. I'm confident that Amy's team thinks they will win again for most fun outfits and performance. So I encourage you all to go after taking the throne from Marketing and Communications. So look for those announcements right after Thanksgiving. We also will come back with another in-person town hall before the end of December. And in that one, we will dedicate the time to Rosemary updating us on Academic Affairs, progress and priorities, and then Greg will point with Student Services. For the faculty that are in the room, I know Rosemary meets a faculty tomorrow, and she, and Greg will be accompanying her, so there'll be sort of a double, double offering. But look us to come back before the end of December with another opportunity like this one. So happy Thanksgivings to everyone. Please enjoy that time and look forward to seeing you all soon.